Tuesday, March the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P. M. If you would, please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices, and please stand for the prayer by Mr. Scott, our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen, and the pledge by Councilman Ward One, Cameron George.
Hail the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit tonight. We give you honor, we give you praise. We thank you for your presence here tonight. We ask, Lord, that you are just in this room tonight, that you give us guidance, Lord, as we conduct city business. We ask God for a special protective hand on our first responders, God. We thank you for the blessing in our lives, the lives of our city workers and the families, Lord, in this city. We thank you most of all for your son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for us, Lord. We ask all this in his name. Amen.
A pledge only to the pledge. A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman George, and thank you, Mr. Ankersen. That brings us to our agenda order approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallot. Any discussion? All in favor, motion carries. That brings us to our announce. Oh, Councilman Anderson, I'm sorry, I forget you're not here. Councilman Anderson's not here this evening. Um, he's participating by phone again. Announcements by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
Tasty Thursday will be March twenty-eighth, starting at eleven A. M. at the Fennec Center in Mossburg.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. We don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to business agenda item number one, resolution requesting local and private legislation authorizing the governing authorities of the city of Goche to enter into a contract with the Mississippi Songwriters Festival, Inc., D. B. A. Mississippi Songwriters Alliance, for the management and operation of the Mississippi Songwriters Performing Arts Center and Recording Studio, and to provide the Mississippi Songwriters Festival with funding for educational programming and operational costs and for other related purposes. Any staff presentation, Ms. Shancy?
Yes, this is a request for a local private legislation. What it does is give you legal abilities and legal options. There is no contract. The funding part of it is in case there, the city is used as a pass-through mechanism to get funding to the songwriters. This gives you a legal vehicle to pass that funding through. This local private was done after some consultation with some legislators and all their recommendations. I feel like if you decide to use it, you will have it in your toolbox, so to speak.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one?
I have a question.
Okay, if you do come to the podium, state your first and last name and your address related to this item.
Sheila Conroy, twenty seventeen twelve Catholic Hermosa. What it says here, funding for educational program and operational cost, what would that, what would that mean?
So, Mississippi, can I answer?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Shancy.
So, Mississippi Songwriters Alliance does an educational program in the schools where they go in and they help children learn, like teenagers and high school students, learn how to write a song, and then they give musical instruments to the different schools. And they're currently in like twelve counties. So, they have asked several years for funding from the legislature to support that program and their educational efforts in the schools. And this just says if they give the funding and they give it to the city for educational purposes, that we will be able to in turn give them that money to support that educational program, so to say.
Yeah, 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 I thought you were giving money away.
No, no, no. Come here.
We don't have any to give away, Ms. Sheila.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Okay. Any other public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion from council to approve the resolution requesting the local and private legislation authorizing the governing authorities of Goche to enter into a contract with Mississippi Songwriters Festival, D. B. A. Mississippi Songwriters Alliance, for management and operation of the Mississippi Songwriters Performing Arts Center and Recording Studio, and to provide the Mississippi Songwriters Festival with funding up to two hundred and fifty thousand for educational program and operational costs and for other related purposes?
Hold move.
Motion by Councilman Gallot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
That we're on comments, we're not voting yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, no comment.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gallot?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Sheila, Ms. Sheila, you thought, you thought you was gonna get in on the money? No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
Uh, I just want to thank our city manager and working with the songwriters. They do a lot here on the coast and in the state and with our youth. And if you ever get a chance to hear some of their performances, I encourage you to. But one thing in particular, last year at their festival, to kick off their Songwriters Festival, the youth at Resurrection Catholic School was a part of that and sang the new state song for the state of Mississippi, and they did a phenomenal job. So, they encourage youth and motivate them, and so it's a great partnership to have for our youth in our community. We have a motion by Councilman Gallot, a second by Councilman College, all in favor. Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. It's the approval of the docket of claims. The staff, our city manager and city comptroller, I mean, city clerk and comptroller, Theresa Montgomery, has already furnished them to us all. If you have any, they've been published online. So, that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two, approval of docket of claims? None. Do we have a motion by, from council?
I make a motion, we approve the docket of claims by that all entries are there, they're out or true, correct, properly entered, not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gallot?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda. They're all approved in one motion unless one is pulled from the agenda. One, approval of minutes from regular council meeting held March the fifth, twenty twenty-four. Two, receive February twenty twenty-four privilege license report. Three, receive December twenty twenty-three and January twenty-four finance reports. Four, authorization to enter into professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for work associated with Goche Van Cleve Road Sidewalk Valley Wood to U. S. ninety project. Five, authorization to acknowledge bids and award the contract for the purchase of excavators.
I want to further this one.
The city of Goche's utility department being pulled by Councilman Jackson. Six, authorization to acknowledge bids and award the contract for the city of Goche's utility department vehicles. Seven, authorization for barricades to be utilized by Goche Pride for organizational celebration at Azteca's Restaurant. Do we have a motion to approve one through four and six through seven?
Hold move.
Have a motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number five, authorization to acknowledge the bids and award contract for the purchase of excavators for city of Goche's utility department by Ms. Ramona Morgan.
Okay, the only question I have is real simple. I noticed we used the term base bid. Was this the lowest bid or this was, if it was not the lowest bid, was, what was the qualification?
We received three different bids from three different vendors on excavators themselves. Two of the vendors were very close together in pricing, but availability difference was very, I guess, very different, shall I say. One came in at the forty-five day lead time, and the other is a one day lead time, meaning if this bid is awarded, let's say, tonight, we can see them as soon as tomorrow.
Okay.
Which is, which would be great for our progress with a small difference between the two, I believe total cost was a little over two thousand dollars difference.
Okay.
With, with an added warranty on there for a total of five hundred warranty. The warranty cost with, of each machine combined together was around thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars extra for an extra three-year warranty per machine. So, add with the added cost difference plus the availability, to be honest, they're needed now for progress to be made around the city, and it was a big, the overall decision, but that was a smart move there.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Do we have a motion to authorize, authorization to acknowledge receipt of the three bids of, for the purchase of the excavators and award a contract to the base bid pocket rents for total base bid of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand forty-six dollars and forty-eight cents with the three-year extended warranty and one day delivery time?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Gallot. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gallot?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? I just want to thank everybody and all the information. I don't know if it appeared online, but the bid tabulation with the days were on the package. If anybody questions it, they'll be able to direct them to the bid. We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Gallot, all in favor. Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda, citizens' comments. You have three minutes to, um, come to the front and state your name. Y'all, everybody on the list, I think, knows the protocol. You will let, give you notification. Councilman College, he thanks to our-
Yeah, new one.
-planning department, Ms. Shanda, also known as Addie Bang, and Sam over here, King, they got us a nice number one. Okay, first up is Mr. Anthony Snow. Mr. Anthony Snow.
Ms. Dela was ready.
Um, well, either somebody signed him in or he left, sir. He's no longer here. Two would be Mr. Richard L. Jackson. Okay, y'all are all okay with Mr. Moore going ahead? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Oh, I'm in it, haven't started, I said my name. Dela Moore, nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Mayor Vaughn and Councilmen. As I have stated before, a computer fraud is, this act prohibits intentionally accessing computer without authorization or in excess of authorization. Hack into a personal electronic device by way of a breach of files, email, social media, and other related material is a computer crime against the privacy of the individual. Furthermore, victim of fake accounts, fake accounts that spread false and defamatory, defamation information have the option to sue and to seek discovery into who created the account and possibly even recover money, damages, money. So, I have stated that before, and I have, I'm asking all of y'all to join in with me just one time to ask council to file a police report because it is against the law to hack someone's first account. And he has not done that, so it makes me wonder if Goche finally can help him out. They said they would, he have not filed, he have filed a police report. I hope you understand what I'm saying. I ask y'all to ask him to file a police report. Casey Vaughn, you are doing a great job. You're a young man, you are doing a great job in the city of Goche. I know I come here and I talk a lot, but I want you to know, I appreciate your work. I know a lot of people was against things that you want to do, so rather older people, I'm old too, but I don't want to deal with new, young ideas, and you have great ideas, you're not afraid to express yourself or your ideas. I want commend you for what you're doing, and all the customers are doing a great job except for, rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. That brings us, number two, Mr. Richard L. Jackson.
Richard L. Jackson, forty-five, forty-eight Hill Street, Mossburg. I'm the first white policeman of the N. W. A. C. P. since Mr. Clark is not here. I'm just going to speak. I'd like to first thank Mayor Vaughn, Councilman Jackson, Attorney Donals, and Detective Seymour. They were instrumental in the Sutton family found in the Mrs. Persson's case. Their son, Timothy Sutton, has been missing since March physically of last year, and the last time they talked to him is April of last year. Um, the importance of this is that Mr. Sutton is Goche resident, thirty-six-year-old college graduate, a Navy corpsman, and he is the director of center to Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. And his vehicle was found about six weeks ago in Waynesboro, Mississippi. And without the assistance of Mr. Donals, Mayor Vaughn, and Councilman Jackson, and especially Officer Seymour, nothing has been done. But this, this particular police department here got on the case, they got everything moving, and now things are starting to happen. So, I want all of you to know that we're thanking. And Sutton will be back next Friday, then they'll try to make it here on the next Tuesday, the first time. Second thing, real quick, Councilman Anderson. I know Ms. Moore spoke, and, you know, I know to some people she might not be too posh, however, her, uh, what I'm saying is that when you get ready to explain, um, however, what she's saying does hold a lot of weight. Councilman Anderson, I know you have a lot of concerns about meeting in different places and with different people, but if it's all right with you, I'll go and meet you over there at the police department right there in Goche. You can file a report, and the police can bring it back, turn it over to Mayor Vaughn. We all trust the police department here because we know that, you know, quite capable and knowledgeable. And then if it's all right with you, Councilman Anderson, Mayor Vaughn can read the results. If it's not your account, thank you, then, you know, we're going to apologize to you and move on. But if it is your account, Councilman Anderson, then I'd like you to at least consider apologizing for whatever happened, and then that way we can all heal, because Goche is a great place, no matter what nobody says. I want people to know that Goche, Mississippi is a beautiful place to be. You guys are doing a great thing, and I encourage anybody who hasn't been here to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That brings us to Mr. Charles Moore.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. Uh, my name is Charles Moore, nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Goche, Mississippi. First, I'd like to thank H. Two-O for cleaning the streets up. It looked beautiful. Westgate look like it belonged to Goche now. Yeah, they did a wonderful job, and I appreciate the police department. They've been driving through to make sure everything go good. That's, that's good, that's a positive thing.
You notice we got motorcycle officers too now, too, and they're shooting radar.
Oh, okay, all right, now, that's what I'm talking about. But, uh, we got a few more things, maybe a couple of dishes they need to, maybe clean out is do this, that we got two or three, one drain is overflowing, but, oh, it looks great. And, uh, I want to say, Councilman Anderson, you need to resign. I'm trying to deal with this over and over. We want to move Goche forward in a positive way. So, let's, let's get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That brings us to Mr. Wardell Stevenson.
Good afternoon. Uh, Wardell Stevenson, forty-nine, sixty-eight, nine survive, Goche. I just want to, uh, real state, I want to make a few comments about H. Two-O. Basically, what Mr. Moore said, the job that they're doing in Westgate, I've been there over forty, almost forty-five years, and this is the most I've ever seen. So, I just want to comment on what's going on in Westgate. Uh, I don't know who's behind it, but also, uh, on, on, uh, there's a Briar Gate. The street on Briar Gate, there's at least five pockets that need to be worked, and there's been attention around in Westgate for years, but Briar Gate has got police. I don't stay on Briar Gate, but I see what's going on in Westgate. Also, if they would, uh, there's a lot of overhanging trees that's overhanging crops on, over the road. If there's any way that some of that can be, attention can be put on that, because if we do get a storm, it might be less that they have to do for cleaning up the road. A lot of times, the trees are overhanging to where they're pretty low, and if something, some, some attention could be put on that, it will be very appreciated. But I just wanted to commend H. Two-O by doing the job he did.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. And they were taking notes back there, I see all of them. The overhanging trees, is that all in Westgate or primarily on, prior to?
In Westgate as well.
Westgate as well, okay.
You have some that's pretty low, and if somebody's got big trucks or if you got a R. V. or anything like that, it could damage it if they're leaving out. Uh, one of the ones I noticed here from Briar Gate toward the end, from the east end, it's been, been like that for a while, but if a lot of these limbs can be trimmed back, like I said, if we do get a bad storm, that might, eleven, that's some problems, you know, at that time, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Next, Mr. Billy Beers.
Yourself, huh?
Billy Beers, working on five Hill Crest Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand again on today to give a report of Councilman Anderson's actions and non-action. I don't want any misunderstanding because whenever he is here, at times he will publicly say he's going to do this or going to do that. However, he has not followed through with any of his promises. He's made it known that he did not want to talk about this matter of a racial Facebook post in City Hall again. However, in our repeated attempts to meet with him outside his hall, he continues to change the date and then cancels the date. He is constantly duck, dodge, deny, and deceive. So, I'm asking that this council do more than just hide behind a statement that you announced one time. I agree with Ms. Moore that Councilman Anderson should be asked to prove his innocence, and as noted, if he did not do this, he can file a police report and investigation can be done. In addition, for future situations, I'm asking that a total of evidence be adopted for this ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our council comments. It's the second meet of the, second meeting of the month, so we start with Councilman Alvin.
Alvin, I just want to thank the city employees, H. Two-O, and Waste Pro for the work you do. We couldn't, couldn't run the city without you, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes, I'd like to address Mr. Stevenson. About a year ago, I did ask for Briar Gate to be looked at, that it was in deplorable condition, and that before we could put it on the patent list, that it was going to have to have some serious work with cutting up the old concrete and patching it, and I, I guess that hasn't been done yet, but I did report that a couple of times, and then one time about nearly a year ago, that it should be looked at before, so we can put it on the patent list, Mr. Stevenson. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gallot? I mean, sorry, Councilman College, I'm sorry.
Where are you at? Your thing's thinking, and I'm thinking, uh, so like what Councilman Alvin has said, I mean, this staff, this city, all the employees, H. Two-O, public providers, everybody does a fantastic job in this city.
Can you make, excuse me, Councilman College, I apologize. Councilman Anderson, can you make your phone?
We couldn't, we couldn't operate this city without everybody involved. H. Two-O has done a fantastic job coming in as our public work, a public work provider here just about every day. It's nice to have the residents come in and acknowledge that also. They've actually hit the ground running, and with this excavation equipment coming in, they're going to be able to do even more and faster. So, they're making some headway, they're very responsive. I'm impressed with them so far to date, and I'm looking forward to continued partnership for years to come. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gallot?
Kudos to what Councilman College and Ward Five down there has said, Dante, and that's it. I agree with it.
Councilman Jackson?
Well, we had a great time this past Sunday. Church came out, Easter egg hunt, a lot of children out to play, even though it rained. It's kind of slowed us down a little bit because it was a lot of rain. The mayor showed up, and I'll let him explain the rest. He probably, you know, he goes into deep debt with things, you know? But, uh, yeah, so, and I'm, uh, proud of what Baycott has become. It's a lot of changes have taken place in, in my war. The condition of it, the needs for things in it has changed, and we still have more to come. Look forward to more to come, and I, I'll wait till I get concrete, make sure the money is in our, in our possession before I say what's coming, but just know that more is to come, and, um, we putting our children first here in the city of Goche. I have no more to say.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Uh, everybody pretty much covered everything, but I would like to say that the amount of positivity that I've heard tonight from comments is very refreshing, and I really appreciate those that took the time to put works together to compliment not only our council, but our public works department and our staff. We see the great things that they do, and it's nice whenever constituents see that because that is an even more reflection of the hard work that they put in, because you're not there with them every day. So, if you're seeing it, that means it's, it's really happening. With H. Two-O, I think we've gotten more compliments tonight about public works than we have in the last seven years. Keep that up. But, yeah, that's all I have. I just wanted to pinpoint that. Let's keep that positivity growing and evolving. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman George. I echo what every councilman up here has stated tonight. The positivity of the staff from the city manager down, we all put in more than a day's work, pretty much every day we're working. We're on call twenty-four seven, and kudos to all of them. This weekend was filled with a lot of events, and I got to spend time with a lot of different departments at the events, and it's an honor when citizens are coming up and you're hearing the positivity if you attend those events. Unfortunately, as some, from the federal delegation to the state delegation to county to the locals, social media is maybe going to be the death of the world today. I'm here to tell you that it is great to use social media to communicate with your friends and to help, like the community pages are made to help assist the police department in fighting crime in your neighborhoods, but all the negativity hurts economic development. But we are here to say Goche is a wonderful place, and we're going to continue to be, move forward, and if you have an issue, reach out to your leader or to the city manager or the department because they do not and are not required- the department, because they do not and are not required to pay attention to social media posts, some we might get photos sent to us, some were not on those pages due to the negativity, so reach out to your elected officials about your concerns, and we go above and beyond to help people. As Councilman Jackson said, this weekend at Baycott Park, I want to thank First United Methodist Church, MJ, their pastor, one of our board of supervisors, Mr. Taylor, sits on their board of trustees, but all of their, from their youth leader to their children's ministry to all their volunteers, go above and beyond, they collect people taking donations to provide community events to reach children who might not have the ability to go somewhere to attend festivities of that caliber that we might host, so I want to thank them for reaching out to our youth that really need us, our youth need us, and that's all I can say, they do. The Easter festivities we had in the city of Goche were top-notch, the night before it tried to rain on our parade, but it didn't rain, and we had a fun day with a lot of amusement rides, and everybody enjoyed it, to hear the positivity was great. Just like Baycott Park, the weather was rough, their pastor was determined to still have the event, accommodations were made so they could have it, yes, we got wet a little bit, the ones of us who were there when it was raining, but the other ones, the sun shined, came out just enough that it was not raining on that, for the event Sunday afternoon on St. Patrick's Day, so Baycott Park was full of youth, full of volunteers, and it's just great to see the park used to how we intended it to be used. Coming up at Shepherd State Park this coming weekend, the Mississippi NICA twenty-twenty-four inaugural event series, the local group here, and majority of those residents live here in the city of Goche, they've started a league, and they, it's youth bike league, and they will have their inaugural event race number two here in Goche at Shepherd this coming March twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, Saturday and Sunday, so if you're available, it's going to be a lot of people, they have over a hundred participants registered, it's going to be a busy day in Shepherd.
I was going to ask, the ceremonies for that are Sunday still, correct?
I would have to go back and look at my email, that was provided by-
Correct.
Yeah, still Sunday, okay.
Opening ceremony will be Sunday at eight forty a.m.
Okay, thank you, Cassidy.
You're welcome.
Okay. Also, you know, when you've got family coming in for a memorial service, and friends that you went to school with who have not been to Shepherd State Park in over twenty years, and to hear them brag and boast about all the amenities that we have there just makes you feel good, so I want the staff to know, we had a lot of guests in Shepherd that were boasting about the bathroom improvements, the marsh walk, the playground equipment, the little children had fun, so kudos to you all. Waste Pro, thank you for your services and what you do and continue to do for Goche and help us grow, and H2O, last but not least, I cannot thank you all enough, and as you heard tonight, your fruits are now getting out there, and you're hearing the thank yous, so thank you all. Kim, I also want to thank you for spending your weekend supporting the Mississippi Songwriters, you and your husband, we appreciate you and your partnership with that. Would that brings us to our city manager comments, Ms. Shancy? Mr. Danos, I mean, Ms. Montgomery, you have, Mr. Danos?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, April the second at twenty, April second, twenty twenty-four at six thirty p.m.?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by College, all in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.